Okay, welcome to the October 15th, 2012 meeting of the New Market Zoning Board of Adjustment. First order of business is a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance is the spirit of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next order of business is the review and approval of minutes of the July 9th, 2012 meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
I second.
Any discussion? Those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next order of business is review and approval of the minutes of September 17th, 2012.
I make a motion to accept them. I had a couple of edits that I sent in to Sue, so just as edited, as amended.
My second.
Any discussion? Those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. The next order of business on the regular business agenda is an application by Acadia engineers and instructors and Russell Servidgey for a variance reference section 3.04 of the New Market zoning ordinance. The applicant requests a variance to permit side setback encroachment along Rivermore Landing property boundaries about a 13 Water Street parcel to the west and north. The lot is located at 13 Water Street tax map U3, Lot 4, in the M2 zone. I'm just gonna ask folks to speak up because the microphone is way over there and it's gonna be helpful when we make up the minutes later. I'm gonna ask Mr. Nichols to make his presentation and then open up the floor for public comment and then we will, once that's done, I'll give the answer. We'll close public comment and then the board will deliberate. Jerry, I understand you have a conflict.
Yes, so I'm gonna recuse myself in this, so I'll sit in the audience here.
Okay. The other thing before we get started, Mr. Nichols, is there's only three of us. We don't have an alternate. Mr. Barr is working and Mr. O'Connell has a conflict. Now, you need three votes in order to get your variance. So it's up to you whether you wanna proceed tonight with three of us needing a basically unanimous hold of the board, whether you wanna have us try to get a couple of alternates to sit in this application, which will give you a statistically better chance of getting an approval. That's entirely up to you.
Appreciate the option, but I think we move forward.
Okay. On that understanding, please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. Got the rendering over there that just shows the proposed buildings and also we got a couple of site plans they handed out on our 17 format, in case anybody needs them for reference.
So the 11 by 17, is it the same document that's in our application package?
It's the same site plan, it's just in a title page. Nothing is changed.
Okay. Thank you.
What I'll do briefly is just kinda walk through the history. I know we've been before, ZDA, a couple times before, but just to get everybody up to speed and understand the history. On September 8th, we requested a, an area variance for side setback along the east and west properties for a new multi-story building and the location of the existing blacksmith shop. The variance was subsequently approved and the variance was along the Rivermore property and along the community church property. On July 9th of this year, we requested a change to the area variance to allow a smaller building footprint and this was in response to butter concerns and some community concerns. So we reduced the size of the building. We eliminated setback encroachment along the community church and we extended the boundary along the Rivermore property about 20 feet to the north and this variance was approved by the ZDA. Today, we're here before you to request a new variance, a new setback variance based on new set of plans for the restoration of the existing historic building and construction of a new independent residential building consisting of four townhouse units. Some of the recent developments that have impacted changes or influenced the changes to the proposed redevelopment, we had the existing blacksmith shop reviewed by an architectural historian in July and the building was determined to be eligible for the National Park Service Register of Historic Places as a contributing structure within the defined historic urban zone. Therefore, the property is eligible for RSA 79 tax relief and federal tax credits if the existing building is restored in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. The applicant, we have initiated a restoration process with the historical architectural historian and the New Hampshire Department of Historical Resources who is helping support the restoration of that building, working with the National Park Service. Secondly, we discovered that the large tree, the prominent tree on the property that most people can identify is an American elm and it's actually, after we did a little research, we learned that it's one of the largest American elms that exist in the world today. In fact, it's the same size as the largest American elm in all of New York State. So obviously, it's a pretty important historic treasure and initially, we thought the tree was over 200 years old, but now it's determined to run out in 160 years. The tree is eligible for the National Elm Tree Honor Roll, which is maintained by the Elm Research Institute team. And if we restore the existing building in its current footprint, obviously, we can save that tree and protect it. Previous plans for redevelopment of the property included raising the existing site, constructing a new building, a vary approximately 17,000 square feet. The area was necessary to make the project financially viable due to the income provided by rentals or sales of residential and commercial spaces. The applicant would retain a portion of the building as office space for our corporate headquarters for our engineering firm. And the last recent development, number four, due to restrictions on building additions to historic properties, redevelopment must be an independent standalone structure. It cannot be, cannot to the existing building for the NPS standards. Therefore, a new structure has to be cited either behind the existing building, where you would again approach upon the New Market Community Church, or to the north of the building in the existing parking area. Therefore, we have developed a new site layout that requires extending the existing setback requirements northward along Rivermore Parking Garage. This revised approach is an economically workable solution that provides the least impact and greatest benefit to butters in the community. So essentially, we're able to reduce the gross area of the development, including the two new buildings based upon tax credits that were received on restoring the existing building will be eligible for a 20% tax credit over restored construction costs. So we believe this provides the best balance for the site redevelopment. Okay, the criterions for demonstrating need for the variance. First criteria, criterion, granting the variance would not be contributed to the public interest. Our first point, requesting variance to butt a privately owned two-story parking garage structure, both height of the building approximately 30 feet, significantly less than the permitted height in the zone bylaws of 50 feet. And there is actually a minimum building height in the M2 district, 24 feet. Variance to the setback distance will allow the building to be moved further back from the Lankford River in the publicly accessible Riverwalk region. Second point, redevelopment of the abandoned and neglected urban property will revitalize New Market downtown, community enhance publicly accessible waterfront area, provide commercial office and residential space for the new patrons and support local businesses. And the third point, criterion one, restoration of the lefty-landed blacksmith shop will preserve an important piece of New Market's history, stand on significantly historic town dog property. It is a unique representation of working craftsmen in the 19th century Old Town. Criterion two, if the area variance were granted in spirit of the ordinance, it would be observed. The zoning ordinances for M2 districts have been established primarily to protect the safety and welfare of the public and protect property values of abutting donors. We have four points that we believe meets criterion two. The first, the proposed mixed-use development is consistent with the intent of the M2 zoning regulations and the current New Market master plan for development of the urban downtown area. That is, the proposed mixed-use development promotes community access and use of the Riverwalk, provides affordable commercial space for small professional businesses, provides affordable residential units for young professionals, adults, and embellished for low-architecture. Second point, the restored historical building and the new building will comply with modernized safety code standards and will have active fire suppression systems. Third point, the proposed building does not encroach on the abutting parking garage structure by more than 10 feet. And the fourth point, the height of the proposed building is 20 feet below the maximum permitted height in the M2 district. Criterion three, granting the variance would provide substantial justice. Our first point, the current zoning setback requirements in the M1 and M2 districts are not entirely consistent with the existing urban landscape and historical development in downtown New Market. Point two, the current plan provides the most workable solution for redevelopment of a uniquely constrained property, considers the issues and concerns previously raised by the town, the butters, and citizens. Third point, without the request of variance, the proposed restoration and development project is not economically viable for the applicant. Criterion four, if the variance were granted, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. First point, current abandoned building is neglected, structurally unsound, and poses a fire hazard. The property remains unmaintained and detracts from the abutting properties. Restoration of the historical blacksmith building according to National Park Service standards will preserve a unique and valuable asset within the urban neighborhood. Second point, consistent with the majority of urban properties in New Market, the abutting properties, the church in Rivermore, do not conform to current zoning setback requirements and they encroach upon the subject parcel. Third point, the proposed redevelopment of the site will enhance the local area and provide an increase in real estate market values for residential, commercial, and retail properties. Improved community access and mixed-use functions will attract the citizens that support local businesses and enhance the vibrancy of the community. Fourth point, the developed property will be a significant subject of interest based on the historic restoration, renewable energies, and energy conservation, but will represent a unique example of responsible and sustainable urban development. Criterion five, unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. So we present that the property is distinguished by several special conditions that constrain redevelopment of the site, thereby resulting in unnecessary hardship. The town of New Market maintains a de-eeasement established in 2008 along eastern property boundary. The area of the easement is 2,162 square feet, which represents 16% of the total parcel area. This easement reduces the billable portion of the parcel and constrains building and infrastructure development along the entire eastern portion of the parcel. The second point, the town easement was designed and constructed based upon a previously planned redevelopment of the property consisting of a seven-unit, three-story residential condominium building for which the town granted a use and area variance. The layout of the easement and as constructed Riverwalk infrastructure restricts the use of the parcel for any alternate design for the site. Third point, constructing a new building to the west of the existing building is not practical given the area constraints, geography, and spatial relationship to New Market Community Church. As noted in previous redevelopment plans for the site, constructing a building in this location would require a setback variance that substantially encroaches upon the historic church building. Fourth point, the configuration of the parcel is non-rectangular or L-shaped, resulting the future site as inherently restrictive for the site of a mixed-use building that complies with A, all setback distances, B, emergency apparatus access requirements, C, provides sufficient vehicle access and parking capacity, and D, provides adequate pedestrian and bicycle accessibility for the community to the Riverwalk easement. Without a setback variance, the northern section of the parcel or parking area could not practically accommodate commercial building, provide vehicular access, and provide bicycle and pedestrian access. Part A2, the proposed use is agreeable. Our first point, the proposed mixed development will be utilized to provide commercial space to the applicant's engineering firm. As a small growing business, we have been searching for a parcel to redevelop that meets our current and future needs. The building will provide an example of high-performance building design and renewable energy technologies. Second point, the proposed use is reasonable considering the proximity to the abutting properties. That is, the abutting properties to the north and west and immediately to the west substantially encroach upon the parcel. The majority of properties in the M1 and M2 districts do not substantially comply with current setback requirements. Third point, as a high-performance, sustainable development that incorporates renewable energy technologies and energy-efficient building construction methods, the proposed facility will significantly reduce the demands of non-renewable and non-domestic energies. The development will serve as a beacon for energy-efficient, high-performance, commercial mixed-use developments of urban areas in the state of New Hampshire. Fourth point, restoration of a historically significant building in accordance with National Park Service standards is consistent with New Market's master plan as it relates to historic and cultural preservation. Part B, if the criteria in subparagraf A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance. The variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonably use of it. Presuming that the New Market ZDA finds that the justification to the variance request that we provided herein is not established by the criteria defined in subparagraf A, we provide the following justification to establish that the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance pursuant to RSA 674.33. To establish a mixed-use development that satisfies the intent of the town of New Market zoning ordinances for M2 and the town master plan requires a minimum footprint area and net building area. Anything less than the proposed building area would render the mixed-use development project economically unviable. Considering the physical constraints of the parcel as defined herein, a setback or height variance is required and considering the necessary residential and commercial space for a mixed-use development. The building will occupy 16% of the undeveloped portion of the parcel, which is far less than all the abutting and the majority of other M2-y own developments. Additionally, the proposed building roof line is 20 feet below the maximum height allowed in the M2 district.
You're getting good at this.
Yeah.
High practice.
It's like deja vu all over again.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna ask you to take the seat and open the fourth public hearing, give you an opportunity to respond to anything that comes up and then we'll get into the questioning by the board. At this point, I'm gonna open up the meeting for public comment. If you have something to add, good matter indifferent to the discussion, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Rob Phillips from Lankford Landing. I'm wondering, is there a site plan that can be presented to the public?
You did not get one?
On board.
This isn't a, this isn't a planning for a site review, but there was certainly a plan here.
To talk about, talk to you, that's a workup. Thank you very much. So you're right, Tim is getting better at this. We also came to the original ZDA and we'll tell you that we appreciate all our names with Tim, the work he's done, how diligent he's been, and how we approach his projects. I think as we commended before that. When we first came before you, we said that we took no exception to it because we couldn't see where it impacted us. So that stood under the old plan and then the church would be able to point out to the ZDA and the planning board. Several ways it really impacted that personal rights. So we appreciate that Tim's taken away that design that now includes the church, more like what it was, and I think that's been better for the church and to the community. Liking Tim's work, I will say that we love this. We think this is great. I've already told you, Tim, that I love that. And this presents a problem to us. So this is a little bit different. Now we're in the church's position where we have some stuff going on that we have to skip to. So I appreciate that this is not as tall as what can be built there, but it is as close as we could reason to get one building to another. The problem it presents to us is that probably twofold. One is, it does in fact present some problems to the people who use parking rides. That is, all of a sudden, they don't have the light, they don't have the heat res, they don't have the public visibility, and I will tell you that several of the women who use the parking rides are a little bit concerned about the way that it would become now that it becomes this kind of like dark and only one approach. You lose your public visibility, which to some people means public support. The height, the height does in fact, impact view sheds, view sheds from Main Street, from Oak Main Street, and from Rivermore Landing. That building would be ideal, a two-story building that would present much less of a problem to us. In working with Tim, I know that Tim is appreciative of mitigation, so depending on how we go forward, when we go to the planning board, obviously, we would be talking about certain things that we would need on our site that would help mitigate these problems, but I do wanna tell you that I believe that although the project itself is very good, it presents some problems as to diminution of values of property owners of Rivermore, and I do not think that taking away the view shed is in the public interest. Most towns are fighting to maintain those if they can. Last button I wanna make is, as it relates to the purpose of zoning and the purpose of variance, there are several reasons to work around variance, no doubt. There are times when something that someone wants to do just really has no impact on anyone and makes the project much better. We think that a better consideration here is that what you can do on the property should probably be in conformance with the variance, should probably not impinge on anybody's property, and there would be something to be built on that property that would satisfy that requirement, that might need a different scope of project, it might need a different value based on the existing land, but we don't think it's in the spirit of the town zoning to use a variance to essentially provide an economic bootstrout, a leg up, if you will, to someone developing this property, whether it be Tim or someone else. So as you go forward, please keep in mind there are other things that can be done with this property. There's other things that can be built. You should consider the negative impact on the butters just as the town is putting up with your concerns, and I thank you again for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please.
My name is Jim Lyell. I'm also from Rivermore Landing, and I have lived there 10 years, 14 years of New Market as well. I do wanna thank Tim for being forthright and open with us. We've had a good working relationship with him, which we appreciate, and we wanna continue with that even though the focus of his development is sort of around the corner from the church to behind our property, so I'm not a rookie. We'd like to keep that relationship going. Just some thoughts, and my thoughts go in similar direction as Rob's, but I'll say some different things. The footprints of these buildings precede the automobile era by and large. If you look, Tim showed historic pictures. It was a blacksmith's building. That was a horse and buggy era. Buildings were much closer together. Now we have automobiles. We have trucks, which we try to keep off of the, along the river. And we just recently have opened up, the building's just north of us, there are more people, pedestrians and cars, so this area is much more congested because of the virtual vehicle traffic, so we have concern with that. My understanding is that the proposed townhouses, which are the new section, actually, that there's a 10-foot setback now and he wants to come over that eight feet in places, and you can clarify whether that's true on your footprint. So we're talking about along maybe two-thirds of the garage coming eight feet over the setback in certain, in many of the places. There's sort of a setback. They aren't exactly in the same line. The townhouses are sort of steps, so each of those townhouses, I think, comes way over the 10-foot setback requirement. I park in the lower level greatly, daily just a few feet from where these buildings would be, and I can tell you it would change things dramatically. The garage was designed to be open, and this wouldn't functionally enclose it certainly at the lower level. There are safety and lighting issues which Rob has talked about. On the upper level, I would call to your attention, which I think is in the public interest, that there are two open vistas to the river in downtown. One is at the Lankford River Bridge when you come into town. The other open vista in the center of town where you can look across and see the opposite side of the river is across the upper level of our parking garage. Okay, that's the last open large, yeah, actually, if you stop a second, if traffic allows you, you look down past the church on Water Street, right, you've got a really narrow picture of the river. People do come on our upper level and do look at that. We don't discourage people from doing that. So that basically would be gone. Many people in the building do think there would be an adverse effect on property values of the condos. People technically on their parking spots, their parking spots lose the Riverside Vista, so that's gonna affect their ability somewhat, affect the price. So there is this issue of this is an unusual lot. The previous plan sort of crowded and shoehorned everything between the blacksmith building and the church, and now the shoehorning is proposed to come around the corner. And basically, what had been the parking lot is now gonna be the new building in the parking lot that it goes over between the church and, and the old building. So it is an unusually shaped lot. Again, there's a fair amount of activity across there and putting in four townhouses. Again, there's a fair amount of activity across there and putting in four townhouses is going to... If you have to shoehorn them within two feet of our lot line, it's still pretty tight there. If you honor the setback and you have to push it much closer towards the river, which I don't know, I hear there are setback requirements from the river as well by the state. And again, I don't... So you're sort of caught between two different setback requirements, as a layperson, I understand that. So I ask you to honor the setback requirements because as an owner and talking with other owners, I think that this would have adverse impact on property values. It would have an adverse impact on that public vista. Also, I don't know if you need to know, I'm an economist. When I look at the price of something and say that this is economically viable, I would say this real estate price that's been pre-negated, whatever it is, I have no idea what it is. The fact that you need to build another separate building is because the agreed price is too high. At a lower price, one might propose a renovation of the existing building. So again, I know you are under certain legal constraints. This is what you can consider and I consider. But what I ask this board to do is not honor, not change the setback requirements because the price is too high. So that now we have an argument, this is, that this is the way things have to be done economically. And I said, oh, that's not true as I understand it. If the price were half what it is, and again, that might hurt existing owner and the developer, maybe another development would be possible. So that's my point of view. And again, I appreciate what Tim is trying to do in build new buildings and renovate this. This is a very interesting area that I hope that you say no to his request in honoring the setback requirements.
Thank you. Can I just clarify, if you two gentlemen are speaking on behalf of the Rivermore Board or as your...
We, yeah, I'm president of the board and Jim is vice president.
Okay, just want to clarify.
Right, thank you, yes, I understand.
Yes, Mr. Manso.
Skip me and sell 33 Campbell Way, Newmarket. And I'm here representing Newmarket Community Church. I'm a little concerned with a few of the things that I just heard. And so I guess I'll speak to them. In previous applications, I did come and speak about the proximity of the previous plan to our rear property line. And however, there had been a variance granted by this board to be within six feet of our property line. So there was an area of the building that would be inside of the setback. And that was the situation and we were living with that. I did come before the planning board and speak about the building and the proximity of it and how it would darken our pastor's office as well as our secretary's office and our educational rooms. And however, the variance had already been granted and the building was proposed to be the building. And it was a three-story, I believe a three-story structure that close to the church property. And that, unless I'm mistaken, that was going through the process. And then that plan was taken back by the developer. And then we were kind of in limbo for a while. However, had that plan moved forward, that's what we would have had for neighbors. A three-story building about six feet from my property line. And we were resigned to that, that was the proposal. And we were concerned about fire protection and that type of thing. That building was to be a brick building, a brick-faced building and with sprinklers, a fire sprinkler system built in. And so we felt that possibly our wood frame structure might be more of a threat to that building than they would be to us. And so that's the way that went along, but then the proposal was taken back by the developer and this new proposal came forward. So I don't believe that anything that we had to say about the proposed previous development had anything to do with that plan being taken off the table. I don't know anything that the planning board did that would have discouraged that. So, but it seemed to be, it seemed to come out in that light this evening. So I was just a little concerned about that and just wanted to let you know how I felt about it and I'm speaking for the church. So we did speak in favor of this plan. And we did not speak in disfavor of the previous plan. But we did speak in favor of this plan at the planning board, tried to be coming here to the board with adjustment. And it's pretty obvious that this plan preserves the existing building, what I call the old Joyce's kitchen. And it does preserve the parking lot, which exists today between that property and the church. So is this a better situation for the church? I would say so in terms of keeping its natural light and in keeping with what we are used to on that side. Obviously, it does impact the parking garage. However, I have to say that I think that the river is supposed to be enjoyed and viewed by the Riverwalk, which is why it's there and why Shandys Park is there. And the Riverwalk does go all along in front of this property and it is a nice view of the river. And I think that this townhouse structure certainly enhances the view if you were in a canoe or a boat or a kayak on the river. The, I just think that it's better looking than a parking garage. I did hear, I did hear the points about docking the parking garage, which was the same points we had about docking the backside of the church. And we have to agree that that's something that will exist if the infrastructure is there. But I think that's kind of part of what the zone is. But I do believe that that's a far better view from the river than what we have presently. At the same time, I do understand the issues it will cause in the parking garage and that's something that you folks will have to decide about. But I just wanted to set the table straight about, I didn't think that the town did anything for the church in terms of causing that previous issue to go away, that development to be abandoned and this plan brought forward. So I think that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Anyone else? Mr. Pickering. Good evening.
Good evening. Lowry Pickering, 119 Ashland Road. Resident taxpayer, 57-year resident. I'd like to talk about a little bit of historical perspective as far as the view of the river goes, first of all. I moved to this community all those years ago. You can walk along Main Street and see the river. And you can't do that today because there's a garage there now. And that garage, that parking garage, used up most of the land that it had to get all the space that was needed to park the vehicles that they needed to park there. The proposal that's being presented is also doing pretty much the same thing, using up all their available land. They're paying taxes on that land, they should be able to use that land. I can't believe that someone in these economic times that we're in would come to Newmarket and be willing to spend such an amount of money rehabbing an area downtown. We don't even see houses being built in this community. No one's building, there's no money. No one's here to invest to bring their money to set up shop in Newmarket. Yes, we've had some stores open in downtown Newmarket in existing buildings that are already there. No one's building anything. I don't know if anyone's checked their tax bill lately. Last year, our tax bill spiked over $3,000. No relief in sight. All you hear about, we need a $53 million school, we need to do more water upgrades, we need to do more sewer upgrades. All that's going to do is add more burden to our taxes that we are already paying. We have a company here that's willing to invest money in downtown Newmarket to enhance the beauty of the town, to get rid of the ugly dilapidated fire hazard building that is there, they're going to rehab it, at one time it was coming down. But that's okay, in my opinion, if they leave it there. It certainly looks beautifully out as rendering. I'm sure doing these renderings more than once isn't a pleasant bill to be paying either seeing they've gone around a few times doing that. Newmarket currently, out of 234 communities in the state of New Hampshire, is ranked number 39 as being the highest taxed communities in the state. In other words, we pay about, we're in the top 20% highest taxed citizens for property in the state of New Hampshire. How are we going to get away from that and deter that back? Well, this is a good way right here to start. And I don't know what the valuation of this is going to be and I'm certainly sure that we're talking in the millions. And that will add some tax base to the community. Again, the mills, way back when, when they were built, they took the vista away from the people that walked the sidewalks in front of those storefronts. We all seemed to live with it and not only that, it provided jobs for the community, which certainly was a benefit, it provided more taxes, which this building will do. We need some tax relief and in my personal opinion, the majority of this citizen in Newmarket that pay the tax bill, and it is an exorbitant one, should be hugging these folks for coming forth to present such a wonderful presentation. I wholeheartedly support them and I certainly hope that the you folks here will give them the adjustments that are needed to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else?
Mr. O'Callaghan. Terry O'Callaghan, Francis Grant Road. I'm the reason I recuse myself tonight, obviously, since I'm the agent for the sale of the property. And I just want to address one of the comments tonight that, you know, something else could be built on there. And we all know, yes, that's possible, something else could be built on there. But I've had the property listed for two and a half, for three years now. And nobody else has come up with a better plan. So, you know, we've got, it's a type of property, the last real, really the best part of Newmarket that's left us not to develop yet. And it needs, something needs to happen there. And, you know, it's, I don't think it's a matter of the feasibility of the economics is not just selling price and that will eventually come out. But the feasibility is the user's use of it and what he needs to use it for, where he's putting his own offices and how that makes it a viable project for him, not based on the price being too high and such. But the main thing is, you know, we need a plan for this property, it's been sitting there as an eyesore. And it's, I was very excited that the plans came forward. I actually liked the first plans, I liked the second plans and this plan is looking really good because the main thing is the whole building is getting restored. When I first heard that, I didn't know whether it was the best thing or not, but it's a great thing for the town to have something restored like that and have a problem back in. And then if you're looking at, okay, well, what can we do with it now? Then you do have the constraints on the sides, you have the constraints on the back and you actually have the sewer constraints on the front. There's a sewer easement on the front which restricts it from getting pushed forward any further as well. Tim is going to be doing some work on the sewers as well to make it work. So pushing it forward, you know, you could, you could take up the viewpoint, yes, you could put something on there. You can push it forward and put it up to the 50-foot height and all the view is gone ahead there. You know, it comes within its own restrictions. That's it.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mark Uller, 303 Ashland Road. I understand fully what John with the villa and the condos are saying. However, that being said, I love to go for walks in the afternoons at Heron Point and look back across the river and it just gets more beautiful and more beautiful. All the lap, all the work that's being done in those old mills, which makes my heart sing. But I'm a collector of some old watercolors of town and I love the old skyline and old historic paintings. And I think, all kidding aside, if you look across the river from Heron Point or from the river itself, what these gentlemen are proposing is nothing but an amazing enhancement to our roof line and the view of Newmarket from the river and it would only turn our town into more of a gem. Honestly, as I look at that picture on the upper left-hand side, I see a beautiful building on both sides and I don't see the parking garage. And I know that, I know that it will be darker on the first floor and the view as they get out of the car won't be quite as wonderful. But they can always park their car and walk right down and go for the most beautiful walk and come across to Heron Point, look from over there. So I take nothing away from them, but that's a blessing.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's no further comments from the public, then at this point we'll close the public hearing. And Mr. Nichols, it'd probably be a good idea for you to come back up in case the board has questions. And if we have questions for Mr. Nichols, I'll address them. If in light of our interchange, anyway, we'll see what happens at that point depending on how extensive the discussion gets. We would have to change the seal though, wouldn't we? I'm looking at the town of Newmarket's seal right in front of me and it's got the view of the town from...
Just move one sailboat from the waterside.
Move the sailboat. Not the daylight of it, but the town's seal is and has been for as long as I can remember, the view of the town from the river, which is helpful. Anybody have questions for Mr. Nichols? Yes, man, go ahead.
I'd like to address the lighting in the parking garage. Is it, would it be possible for you to light that? Put spotlights or something to help that?
Absolutely. We've got some lamp posts around the front of the building. We've got wall pack units at the rear of the building. You know, they're dark night compatible, so you don't get light pollution. Just help provide the security lighting.
I'd be more concerned about, rather than the view from the parking lot, from the lower level, the security. So I mean, if you can, could address that, I think that that, as far as I was concerned, I am concerned that would satisfy myself.
And I just want to, sorry, one more point. Obviously, if that building, the further it shifts away from the parking garage, the more light that would be restricted on that narrow parcel coming to the garage. And they do have artificial lighting, there's lighting fixtures inside the garage.
They do?
Yeah. We actually measured the foot handles, it's about 60 foot handles, which is about three times what the standard recommends.
So there is lighting in the...
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. As far as the view... As far as the view, I have to agree with what I've heard here. I mean, I don't know--
Which view now?
The view from Main Street, I guess you could say. As far as blocking the, I don't see that as a problem. I mean, I go through downtown many, many, many times. Unless you actually walk over to the edge of the parking garage, I don't think this would inhibit the view at all. And as far as I've heard, the view from the river would be enhanced by this building. So I don't see the view as a problem. One question I have for Diane, too. I have three questions. By applying for this variance, this does not remain his--
No, but he would have to go through the planning board process--
Correct, but we--
--to get an approval. No, it's on the books. And also, the variances that were approved previously from Mr. Servidge is still on the books.
Okay, I, that was, okay, thank you.
Did you have other questions?
No, that's it for now.
Tom?
Relative to view, I can remember when the old town hall was there, restricting the site even more. And I'm trying to think back to the old pictures of town, what was actually in the parking lot site originally, because that was all built up through there at one point in time.
And it was taken out, built out, to build that--
Well, no, it was always, I mean, it goes back to Gallants days and stuff. That was parking for, for some of the middle people, too. That's where, that's where the no formulary video part there, the-- I was trying to remember the old photos, but I remember the town hall, the big chunk in there.
And just one comment on view to reiterate the point, I'm sorry to get the gentleman's name, to reiterate his point. The best view of the river is from the river block. And we believe our development, everything that we're trying to do, obviously, is pointing is to improve pedestrian access, improve bicycle access, and give people, give people more of a reason to come down to the river block. And it is utilized by some, but it can be utilized much more.
I'm not clear from the plan and from the conceptual drawing. There's still gonna be the opportunity for a flow of traffic between your proposed building and Rivermore. Right. And how wide is the area between the building? And how wide, how wide is the vehicle access there? Is it 10 feet, 16 feet?
Twenty-one feet.
Twenty-one feet.
Yeah, at this point here, it's, the narrow corner is right from the corner of this building. So we're actually eliminating four parking spaces that are there now. We're gonna vegetate that and then bump out that drive a little bit more, so we can maintain emergency and service vehicle access through there.
Because that, from the beginning, has been one of our overarching concerns, is that there is more than adequate or inadequate emergency vehicle access. That was one of the issues, the initial plan, that you--
Correct. And I did, I did meet with Rick Melaskey when we first revising the approach--
And you will meet with him again.
Yeah. And he did have the issues with that concept.
Now, in terms of what's unique about this property, the way I see it, it's really the easement. I mean, there's lots of properties in town that have long been, that are very, very tight, where the building occupies substantially all of the area. And, I mean, you say in here several times that there's very few buildings downtown that comply with the setbacks, and that's true, because they existed long before there was such a thing as a setback. But what makes this property unique relative to other properties, in my mind, is the easement. Is that fair to say?
The sewer is--
The sewer, well, it uses the sewer line and--
Public easement.
And it's a total easement on the property, which is, which is there. And I say that because it's a very important criteria that needs to be satisfied. And in my view, that's the thing that satisfies it.
I also think that the fact that, looking at the historic redevelopment of the existing blacksmith shop and stuff weighs heavily on my thought process that, you know, that is, that's a big, that's a big plus, in my mind.
Yeah. And the tax, the way the sort of tax credits work makes that possible and necessary.
Are you changing the sewer line? Are you changing, that easement doesn't get, isn't being changed, is it?
Yeah.
Well--
The right of way.
Right of way for the sewer?
Yeah. It's a 20-foot right way, kind of thing on both sides. So when we realign the sewer, it'll still be the 10-foot.
So you, so the sewer line goes from the upper manhole, I guess, closest to Rivermore, and a straight line down to the manhole down near the helm now? And you're putting another manhole up in here?
Right. And replacing that entire line.
And moving it over. Now, does that corner of the building set right on the easement, then?
It's within a foot or two.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very, it's very tight, okay.
And that was actually the original reason why that was Rick Melaskey made sure that the market was relocated and used in favor of it, because obviously, there's a new section of sewer pipe.
And how old is that sewer? About?
It's at least 20 years old.
Okay, all right.
Probably over.
I think it's older than that. And that's the sewer line that services everything from Bay Harbor--
Those gruks, down to the pump station, right?
Yeah. But that's gravity from the middle of the Rivermore landings. Gravity.
Mr. Chairman, any questions?
Go ahead, Diane, please.
On your footprint, Tim, you show the footprint of the new building, about 2,700 square feet. And my question is, is that per unit? Or that's the entire footprint? So what is the dimension of the actual units?
The actual units are roughly 32 feet by, 20 or 22?
20 feet.
20 feet. 32 by 20. The two end units--
So about 700 square feet?
Per floor.
Per floor.
Per floor, okay.
Two and a half stories.
Okay. How many parking, can I ask?
Go ahead, sorry.
How many parking spaces are you proposing within the building at the lower level? Is there two per unit?
It's one per unit, one bay. Some of the bays are, could be configured, so you could actually end it in parking. But the approach is to provide one space.
And I'm just speaking conceptually at this point. If you eliminated the lower floor, would that encroach upon the view from the upper level on the parking garage, or would it be about the same level? So if you remove, you have one, you have said you have two and a half stories. If you removed one story, the lower story, and I'll tell you where I'm going.
Yes, we go from 30 to 32 feet to--
And it wouldn't be as--
22 or 24 feet.
Okay, so I guess my question, and where I'm going with this, there's a concept in planning law, where development rights can be transferred from one block to another block. In your particular case, because of the existing zoning, you have view rights associated with the difference between the 50-foot requirement and what the actual dimension is. My question is, have you broached the idea with Rivermore? And I'm kind of asking this as a rhetorical question. Have you broached the idea of doing some kind of transfer of development rights to protect the view rights, and in return for that, you would receive perhaps some parking within the parking structure? So that the addition wouldn't have to be two and a half stories, and perhaps you could get away with having no parking on the bottom floor. Are you with me, conceptually? And I just wanted to throw that out on the table as an option and something, perhaps, to be explored. I have had some discussions with the Rivermore people in the past about the concept of building on the development rights over the air rights, if you will, over the parking garage, as part of the redevelopment of the downtown.
Yeah, we have had--
Can I just throw that on the table as an idea to pursue perhaps?
Okay, thank you. The only comment I would make is that there's obvious value to having a parking garage underneath. So, you know, part of that, again, getting back to that whole financial plan, which has to work, or for us to, or from where we are now. We need to have that parking underneath. In fact, the bank that we're dealing with, one of the two cars under me, Rivermore, I mean--
A lot of the discussion, as I've heard it and read it, has centered around, the way I read it, that the construction of the new building is necessary to make the overall project economically viable and give you a return on investment that you hope to make in the project. Now, reading the case law, that is a factor that the board considers. It's not necessarily dispositive in one way or the other, because we haven't seen any numbers demonstrate that. But that in itself is favorable, okay? And I just want to make it clear for the record, in case there's an issue later, that although we haven't seen actual proof of that, on the one hand, it's very logical to me, in a way, just to understand the kinds of costs that are very likely to be involved in a restoration of the existing building to meet modern COVID. It's gonna be, in my mind, very close to a ship of Theseus restoration, though. But whether it is or it isn't, isn't really, like I say, isn't really dispositive, in my mind. What's important to me is that you do have a restriction on this property posed by the public easement that makes it different and unique relative to other properties in the area. That it's not, we can quibble about the design, this isn't a design review board, but it's consistent with the overall character of what's going on in that area. Anyway, in terms of the development that's already occurred on the river in that area, so I think it's consistent. And on that basis, in my mind, the sort of reasonableness of the proposed use is satisfied, in my, in my view. It sounds like there's about 10, 10, 12 feet that's gonna stick over the top of the parking garage? Yes. I appreciate the arguments that have been made by the Rivermore folks. And if this, if this building was in between the Rivermore Landmaid Building itself in the river, we'd be probably having a different discussion about it, we'd be on a tribe. And you clearly have a bunch of requirements you have to satisfy for DES, because you're, I'm sure you've got a government's bureau application going. And being an engineer, you appreciate there's gonna be drainage issues and all kinds of other stuff that aren't really within, directly within our budget, anyway, that I can see. But we're just here to talk about whether or not there's a variance. So that's kind of, I just want to make sure those comments are out on the record, in case there's an issue later, and you end up having to go to court and do whatever you have to do. Does anybody else have any further comments?
Can you give us an idea of the range in cost for town houses? Where are you looking to market them, or where are you looking to market them?
Sure. These townhouse units would have to be in the four minutes, which is at the very upper end of the current New Market, market, which we know, we understand that. But there's a lot of benefits. Everything will need geothermal heating cooling, so they have virtually no heating and air conditioning cost, or an electric bill, and that's it. They have, there'll be green roofs, the flat section of the roof, what flesh and vegetated will be green roofs, which will be accessible through the hatch.
Where are you gonna put the loofah field? I asked you this before, and you made fun of me. I know it's gonna go in the ground.
Actually, you go up, right up in the existing parking lot behind the existing building. If we, if we need more well capacity, we can go up in parking lot.
Open loop or close loop?
All closed.
Okay.
So the point I'm trying to make, they'll not only be, you know, high-end, you know, finishes, we're not, we're actually restricted, because it's on the same property as the FD Line Blacksmith Shop. We're restricted by NPS standards on what we can do with that abutting building. You know it's not connected, you know, we can't do things like vinyl siding. It can't mimic, we can't attempt to reproduce that and make it look like it's part of the original site. But what they want us to do is take characteristics from the original building and incorporate those for the modern, for the modern--
You wouldn't want to do that, anyway. It just makes like a nonsense.
Right. And, you know, we think, there is an attraction to being on a property with a restored, you know, historically restored building. And we just think the whole waterfront development will justify those higher prices that we're gonna need to make it viable. As far as construction costs go, the renovation of the existing buildings you alluded to are actually higher in square foot than the new building construction.
You're gonna have significant constraints put on you by the National Parks Service or whoever's giving you the tax credits, and what we can and can't do.
Right. And this, this design that you see in front of you was actually then gone through approval and review, with the state and the board.
Were you gonna take down the tree before in your other designs?
We would have had--
Yes.
Basically, any--
Yeah, okay, so this is a block.
Any redevelopment of that existing building, what you have--
Yeah, I know, it's trying to--
I'm glad you mentioned that, because it would be great to make that a tree.
It would, wow. How do you determine 200 versus 106?
Tree rings.
Without cutting it.
We actually had--
You cut it down to cut the--
Yeah, don't they do boards or something?
We have, we have an archive of historical photos. And there's actually a ton of really good photos of that area. And you can actually see the sapling, and we thought it was around 1820, but it was actually around 1860.
Really?
Of that sapling growing in the summer, so, yeah. So, be interesting.
Anything further?
I just have to agree with you, Chris, that the right of way there is the determining factor.
Yeah.
That's a true, true issue.
Yeah, it's, it's important to establish, not just that the property, that the property is unique relative to other properties in the area. Lots of properties in the area are constrained by having very small sites relative to the size of the building that occupies them. What's important is to establish what is unique about your property. In my mind, what's unique about your property is the constraint posed by the public easement. And that's what makes it different from the Rivermore property itself and other properties in the water. So for the record, it's important that we establish that. And that, in my mind, is what gets you over that particular area.
Anything further?
Also, that easement does provide public benefit.
And the easement is providing public benefit? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir. I'll undertake a motion at this time.
I'd like to approve the variance for our cadet engineers and constructors, uh, constructors slash Russell Servidge--
Servidge.
Servidge. Variance reference section 3.04 of the New Market zoning ordinance.
Based upon the application and all the evidence that we've heard tonight?
Correct.
I'll second that, sir. Any further discussion? I forgot to ask you, Diane, do you have all the voters--
All the voters who notified, as we've noticed.
Now, for the comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, me. All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, any new business or old business to come before the board at this time? We have a seminar. I noticed, but now that there's a little land use seminar for people who want to learn how to use easements. who want to learn how to be EBA members. Something like that.
This is Saturday, 27.
I saw that unfortunately.
And that's being put on by local government, so it's a different concentration, basically, for zoning boards.
Okay, just so we're aware.
And My other piece of interest is Steve Ford, Eric, the script is just arrived, and I wanted to introduce him.
Oh. So now we know who to blame. Yeah, just, I'm trying to meet all the boards and committees I can. Steve Ford. Straight up here. The podium's good. Welcome to the funny part.
Thank you. And so far, I've enjoyed the community a lot. I'm glad we're here and hope for the work on the EBA, which I feel is a big one. I hope to see you guys around a lot more and enjoy the
Well, don't worry, thank you. Find us a couple alternates.
Okay, we'll continue.
Or replace the exercise.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll make sure we can find something.
Thank you.
No problem.
Why don't you, can you raise up some?
Thanks.
No problem, thanks. Nice to see you, Larry.
Likewise, thank you.
1860, you were there with that tree planer, weren't you, Larry?
I was there.
Anything else?
We were just talking about this, the series coming up?
Well, this, there's another program, this is an addition to the, the series, the Wednesday night series, is a session on a Saturday that you put on by local government.
That's one we've seen recently.
That's the one that I sent out to Chris, I think, I don't know, last week sometime?
Did I not? I thought I wanted to be approved.
I went to the whole group, okay.
If people want to go, submit.
Yeah, we have
Is this similar to ones we've done before?
I think so.
I think so, but I don't want to That particular one is going to be in Concord at the local government center, headquarters or anything.
Unfortunately, now we go somewhere in town and do the, you know, the local public, public, we have the public administered, administered projects last
Oh, the DOT, oh, lucky.
Yeah, because DOT changes or Publicly managed projects have to be, have to be certified first.
Yeah, I went through that
The ACUC and my half year sent out a memo critical in the DOT.
It's um October 27th, just the last Saturday.
So it's there, if people want to attend, let us know and submit for reimbursement.
Yeah, we will reimburse you for my
And if not, I mean, that's fine.
Is that a Saturday?
It's a Saturday.
Any other new oral business? No? I'm taking a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of opposed. We are adjourned.